And good evening, I'm Pamela Martin, producer for Fred TV and FRG TV at Durfee High School. I'm honored to serve as moderator for this school committee debate, the first of the season. At Fred TV, we feel fortunate to have this platform to offer viewers, voters, residents, and young adults the opportunity to make informed decisions prior to heading to the polls. Obviously, a majority of our students at Durfee are not of voting age. However, we hope this forum engages democratic interest when they do reach age 18 and sparks future involvement in government. Friendly reminder, please check your mobile devices that they are on silent. I'd like to introduce our panelists representing the student body at Durfee High School. Nicholas Souza to my right, a senior. Give them a round of applause. Thomas Michael, also a senior. And Samaya Un, also a senior. And our candidates are seated, seated to my left, and their seating arrangements were based on a draw. We have Rebecca Collins. Thomas Corey. Kevin Aguirre. Joshua Hetzler. Paul Hart. Mark Costa. Timothy McCoy. Unfortunately, Michelle Larvee had a family emergency and is unable to attend tonight. However, we have left her seat open. Round of applause. I'd like to recognize the timekeepers in the front row. Evan Masood and Daniel Keating. Daniel is a senior. They are seated right in the front. Candidates, please remain cognizant of our timekeepers. You will be notified when there are 15 seconds remaining. See the yellow. And then, when time is up, you'll see the stop sign. So here's our format for tonight. Each candidate will give a 90-second opening statement. Then, students will take turns asking questions. We will certainly try to get in as many questions as possible. Candidates in the first seat, based on this draw, as I mentioned, has two minutes to answer. Then, in order, each candidate will have a one-minute response. We'll continue questioning based on these seating assignments. And lastly, each candidate will have the opportunity to give a 90-second closing statement. To the audience, I ask that you all remain respectful and polite of one another, and let's give each candidate plenty of time to answer. As moderator, I do have the discretion to allow additional time if I feel a candidate's time has been impeded. And remember, as we tell the students, it's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. Let's get started, okay? Our first question comes from Nicholas Souza to Ms. Collins, who will have a two-minute response.
Ms. Collins, what do you think is the number-one issue affecting teaching and learning in our schools, and what can the school committee do about it?
Well, I think probably the most important thing currently is getting the home more involved in the classroom, so, which is probably the most difficult thing. One of the things that I found very difficult was when we would go to parent-teacher conferences as a parent, and there weren't a lot of parent involvement. So I think one of the important things that we might want to do with some of that Chapter 70 money that's coming down the pipe is look at trying to get more home-based education brought into the school. Get the parents maybe involved more with even a parent-teacher conference, something as easy as doing some video conferencing for parent-teacher conferences versus getting parents actually in the classroom, because there are a lot of transportation issues. I think, obviously, we've all discussed previously with each other in other forums about getting pre-K, a better pre-K system, a more inclusive pre-K system, to get these kids in younger and to get the parents bought in earlier to give them the opportunity to understand how to teach our learners.
Okay, one-minute response. Mr. Corey.
So, it's difficult to disagree with that assessment. I mean, we always welcome parent involvement. It's been tough not to crack through the many years that I've known the Fall River Public Schools. So I do agree that we could use more parent involvement. I think that at the heart of this issue, for the biggest problem that's posed to all of our schools, is chronic absenteeism. I'm very, very concerned about the number of students who represent high absenteeism year in and year out. And you look at the gaps in their learning and also the disruption to the classroom process, because a teacher always has to go rewind in order to help get that student back up to a certain par level. So chronic absenteeism, to me, is the lowest common denominator of the biggest problem facing our schools, and I think parent involvement could help remedy that greatly. So I urge parents all over our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
Just wanted to say, are we going to do opening statements as well?
We're going to get back to the opening. Excuse me, yes.
No problem.
I figured I'd let you all finish your first question.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, teaching and learning is an important piece in the Fall River Schools. I think that the school department is doing a pretty good job of managing our system so that we're actually getting up to speed with the 21st century. The students of today are much different, and they come to school with many more needs than we've ever had in my lifetime, for sure. So each and every year, the challenges get greater. So I think that we need to continue to provide training to teachers, to staff. The mental health needs of our students are very important, and if we don't take care of all of those pieces, the teachers can't teach and the students can't learn. The other piece of teaching and learning that I'm a big proponent of is, we need to create a program where we can control the behavior problems in the school. A teacher needs to be able to teach, and a student needs to learn. And I think we need to focus a little more on that, create our program so that when anybody's out of control in a classroom or not ready to be in a classroom, that they're not in there so that the majority of the students can learn.
Thank you. Mr. Hetzler.
Could I ask Nicholas to repeat the question? I was taken aback when we skipped the intro.
You may. My mistake.
It's okay. Thank you.
What do you think is the number-one issue affecting teaching and learning in our schools, and what can the school committee do about it?
Thank you. So, I feel the number-one issue affecting schools at this time is the lack of the proper resources. So, we've recognized that the foundation budget calls for more resources here in Fall River, and thankfully, the Senate has recently passed a measure that, if the House agrees, will have more money coming into the system. We'll be able to fill the positions that are needed throughout the city, so that way our students are getting the resources they need, the teachers are getting the resources they need in the classroom, and we're able to compete with the rest of the communities in Massachusetts. As a gateway city, we struggle with that, and we have a huge population of English-language learners and special education students that require tremendous amount of resources in order to educate them properly and to give them what they need. So, that is one of the biggest challenges, I think, we face, and hopefully, moving forward, we, the foundation budget numbers are approved by the House, and we're able to get the funding that we need for the Fall River school system.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, your turn.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. It's a good question. And, you know, I was on the school committee for four years, and I did try to get a lot of parents involved in their children's education, especially at the elementary level, where it's very, very important. The other issue, too, as far as teaching and learning go, I think that it's very important to, when you look at the class sizes in our district, especially at the elementary level, it's very important for us to, at least if we can, reduce the class size. But of course, that's difficult to do if you don't have the building space of the classroom or extra classrooms. So, the Student Opportunity Act that is going to be, I hopefully, approved by the House of Representatives in the next week or two, is going to provide a lot more, a lot of resources, and we could allocate a lot of those resources to hire more paraprofessionals in the classroom to alleviate the, you know, when there's 28 or 30 kids in a classroom and one teacher. I think it would behoove us to absolutely put full-time pairs, at least in the first, second, and third grade level, or kindergarten level. So I think by doing that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Costa.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicholas, for the question. You know, to sum it up in one minute, I would say that there are a number of challenges facing teachers and impeding on the teaching and learning process in the classroom. Mr. Hart mentions class size. This committee has worked to lower class sizes, 26 on average. That may be a little different at the high school, with different cost offerings, but I think the reality is that with the state accountability system the way it is, teachers are strapped for time, and really, time is of the essence when it comes to teaching and learning. The actual amount of subject matter that can be taught in a class, in a particular school day, puts teachers up against it. You couple that with students that are coming to school with a whole host of social-emotional issues, and that becomes another obstacle, if you will, in the classroom. And so, how does the school committee work towards that? We continue to train our teachers. We continue to understand that their time is valuable. We try to offer them assistance with additional support, meaning paraprofessionals and other support services.
Thank you. Okay. And my mistake, I did overlook that 90-second opening statement. Excuse me if I've thrown anyone off. So let's please start now. Ms. Collins.
Do you want to give Tim the question?
Tim McCoy's going to answer that.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Mr. McCoy.
Nicholas, thank you for the question. You asked where I believe the school committee can make a great impact. If you're asking me to isolate one issue, teacher retention, teacher retention, teacher retention. I believe we have to take a community approach, as important as fighting crime, as important as fighting our opium addiction problem in the city. We need to get our teachers here and keep them here. My experience in the past, we would help teachers receive professional development status, and they would often move on to other districts. We need to find a way, a novel way, whether it's help with teachers right out of college with stipends to help with Sally Mae student loans, whether it's working with the city council and the mayor to provide tax credits, real estate credits, if they're willing to move to our city. We need to take a novel, unique approach as a gateway city to say, "Come to us and stay here," and in return, ask them for a commitment to stay. I know there's been some appropriate programs that have come up recently.
Thank you.
To help with master's programs, but I think we need to keep those young, ambitious teachers here.
Okay. Let's get to our 90-second opening statements now. Ms. Collins.
Thank you. I want to thank Fred TV for hosting this debate. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Rebecca Collins, and I'm excited to be running for school committee. As a parent of four children and as a business owner, I believe that the future and the prosperity of our city lies in the education of our students. I was born, raised, and educated in the city, and after furthering my education and living in a couple of other places, I decided to come home and to continue my career and raise my family. Through my involvement in my family business, I was given the opportunity to serve on a number of nonprofit boards in the city. The board involvement gave me knowledge of many of the great programs and people within our city. My profession as a construction management allows me the knowledge of budgets and facilities. And my role as a parent has shown me the needs and requirements of some of the children in our school system. It's created a passion around the quality of education our children receive. I believe my experience has prepared me to make a meaningful contribution to the members of the school committee. Being an effective community member requires collaboration and creating teaching to ensure our resources are invested in our classroom and our tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently. One of the most important skill sets I possess is my ability to listen, to consider all the information presented, and to develop an action plan. As a business owner, I've learned how to be a good negotiator and develop skills to work both with clients and vendors and to bring fair resolution to all parties. I look forward to hearing the rest of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Thank you, Fred TV, for hosting this debate. Hi, my name is Tom Corey. I'm running for reelection to the Fall River School Committee. I'm currently in my first term and have enjoyed serving our community in this capacity and role. As a retired educator, I have a deep inside view of the needs of our schools, our teachers, students, staff, and programs. Throughout my career, I have earned a reputation of positive action and delivering on my word. I have approached my role on the school board in the same way. The difference now is seeing issues from the outside view. The school committee must work collaboratively with each other in our governance of school business and to manage the budget set forth by the superintendent while delivering services to all our schools and all our students. I stand for equity. I'm really proud of our schools and the work that they're doing, day in and day out. The teachers are working so hard. It's a pleasure for me to serve the teachers and students in this city in my role on the school committee. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
To the people of Fall River, let me say thank you. Thank you for your past support and your present support of my candidacy. Because of that support, I've been fortunate to serve for 10 years on the Fall River School Committee and five years as a state representative. I truly appreciate it. Public service has really been an integral part of my life, and I truly believe that I've made a difference during my tenure as an elected official. I work hard, and I get results for the people of Fall River every single day. As a member of the Fall River School Committee, I do my homework, I ask important questions, and I advocate for our students on a daily basis. And the opportunity to serve as an elected official in this community continues to be one of the most rewarding pieces of work that I've ever performed. The Fall River Schools continue to face many challenges each and every day. I offer my services to assist in meeting these challenges directly. I have experienced working full-time as an educator for the Fall River Schools at all three levels, and I currently serve as a high school vice principal. My experience with our education system, the legislative process, my passion for making a difference for the children of Fall River make me qualified to serve as a member of the school committee. I'm asking once again for your continued support. I'm asking for one of your six votes. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Hetzler.
Hi, everyone. I want to thank everyone for putting this together. I appreciate it, and I want to thank the citizens of Fall River. My name is Joshua Hetzler. I am married, happily married, to my wife, who's an adjustment counselor. So I have, I get to rely on her and her experience at home and her knowledge. I have four children that all go to school here in Fall River, two are in elementary school and two are at high school at Diamond. So I have the perspective of a parent, and I understand what the kids have gone through over the years. I am a Fall River firefighter, and I was also in the military, so I have a strong concern for safety in the schools. I'm also a contractor and a small business owner, so I understand construction. So I think I have a unique position here on the school committee, where I bring my talents to the table, and I can use them to make good decisions that benefit the children and the citizens of Fall River. I'm very honored to serve on the school committee for the past two years. I'm hoping to be reelected. My colleagues and I have done tremendous work, and I hope to continue the progress that we've made, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Fred TV, and the students, and UPM, and the folks out there watching on TV, and the people in the crowd here. My name is Paul Hart. I'm a lifelong resident of Fall River. I attended all public schools in this city: James Tange Elementary School, Morton Middle, Durfee High School, UMass Dartmouth, and received my master's in education from American International College. I have two wonderful boys, Paul Hart Jr. and Matthew Hart. I'm a social worker for the Department of Transitional Assistance. I have served on the city council for six years and the school committee for four years. I believe I have the valuable qualifications for this position. I bring many qualities and ideas to the school committee. When I first ran for school committee, I wanted to bring more transparency to the government, to our government, and I immediately acted. I asked the mayor and superintendent to begin televising the subcommittee meetings. The subcommittee meetings are very important, and a lot of work is done at these meetings, and I thought it was only right to televise the meetings so the public can see their government at work. The mayor, superintendent, and vice chairman, and other colleagues on the school committee, Mr. McCoy, agreed with me, and the meetings were televised before I was elected. I will always listen to everyone and make sure our school committee works together with our mayor and superintendent. Again, I thank you all for coming tonight. I ask for the folks out there for your support and vote on November 5th, and I look forward to more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Pamela. Thank you, Fred TV, and thank you to Samaya, Thomas, and Nicholas. I look forward to this evening. Certainly intrigued by the first question, and I'm sure you'll be following up with some very detailed, pointed questions. I've served on a school committee now for 14 years. It's been a very rewarding experience. In my tenure, there's nothing that's been more important to me, and my passion lies in education. The reality is, a good quality public education, in fact, could be a game changer for most. I know for a fact that the emphasis that was put on education by my parents with me and my siblings. Proud to say that I'm the first-generation college graduate. Without education, you limit your opportunities, and so I'm pleased here tonight to be part of a forum where students are actually asking the questions and they're engaged. If we can get students connected earlier in this process and understand the importance, not only is their role as a student, but to come back and be engaged civically, it's certainly a win for this community. There are many challenges facing the city of Fall River. Clearly, education is one of them. Happy to say that over the last 14 years, the school district has seen progress, and that's a result of people being able to work together, to come to a common ground on particular issues that face students, making sure that resources and finances are directed directly to the classroom so students have the access to the education they need and deserve. And so, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McCoy.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank Fred TV and our students and everyone who attended tonight. My name is Tim McCoy. I have previously served with dedication on this committee for approximately eight years. I'm proud of some of the collaborative efforts that I was a part of. We expanded AP programs. We developed extended-day grants, a variety of other employee assistant programs, a recovery plan that became a model for other school districts throughout the Commonwealth. I think those things are important. What I'd like to see moving forward is for us to, some of the issues that colleagues have highlighted earlier, for us to adopt a district-wide Mental Health Day every March, which is the longest of the academic year for both students and teachers. I'd like to see us start taking a turn and move our state reps to increase transportation safety. I mean cameras, and I mean seat belts in our buses. I find it objectionable that most of us have a car that won't move without a seat belt engaged, yet we still don't have required seat belts on all student buses. And I would also pledge to move to adopt all-day pre-K, because again, as it was said or alluded to by some of my colleagues here, I think the quicker we get students, I think the more comfortable we get them in an academic atmosphere, the better off we are, and that is a piece in conjunction with retaining our teachers to develop a consistent delivery of education district-wide. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second question comes from Thomas Michael to Mr. Corey, and we'll have two minutes to answer, and then the one-minute responses.
Mr. Corey, more than 15,000 signatures have been collected in support of the Promise Act, which will add $1 billion to the state's K-12 education budget. How would you spend funding that might come our way?
What was that? How would I spend?
Spend the funding that might come our way.
How would I spend the funding? Well, first of all, I want to let you know, Tom, that I've attached myself to this fight very closely, the ed funding fight. This year's state budget was a critical down payment on comprehensive school finance legislation, but our students need action on that long-term fix to our broken funding system. So the system has been broken for so long and affecting cities like Fall River, gateway cities, for so long, and finally, that money is going to be re-appropriated in our favor. How would I spend it? Well, we discussed those matters in school committee, and the superintendent comes up with a strategy by talking to his principals, and the principals outline the needs of each school in the district, and they present a priority sheet to the superintendent that is then discussed with the school committee. And we're able to prioritize the needs given by the requests of the principals. So it's like site-based management. Whatever the site needs, that's where we're going to appropriate. And believe me, we could use every penny of that extra funding to promote teacher retention, which is such a critical issue in our district, because if we could retain teachers for long term, we create far more stability in the schools, in the classrooms, and in consistency of pedagogy. So there's so much to consider. We really need that money. It's coming down, and I want to thank our FREA Teachers Union. I want to thank the superintendent of schools and the school committee for putting the pressure on the state legislature to make this happen, and our local delegation has been having our back the whole way. Thank you.
Thank you. And our one-minute response will come from Mr. Aguirre first.
So, having extra money is a great thing. We're actually experiencing that now. So the amount of money that's supposed to come down from this act is really tremendous, and it's needed, because other communities are getting 130, 140 percent of net school spending, where Fall River is always just barely at 100. What we're looking at is needs. There's needs in the classroom. We have people in the school system that actually has to do two and three jobs. Take a teacher, for instance. A teacher's not only a teacher, they become the counselor, they become, you know, the attendance officer in some ways, trying to get the kids to school. You have multiple people doing multiple jobs. With extra funding, we'll increase our counseling roles. We have counseling roles now of 400 to 500 to 1. That's too many. We have needs going on, and we need to get people in the classrooms that can actually help. Special education's another one. We talk about inclusion, and you talk about special education. Right now, we don't have enough special educators to meet the needs of the children that are in our classrooms. So all of those things across the board will be multiplied with the extra money.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. One minute, Mr. Hetzler.
So, this district desperately needs more money for more resources. We could use paraprofessionals in the classroom, more behavioral specialists. I mean, across the board, we need teachers, we need administrators, we need the supports in place to provide our students what they need. And how we would spend that money, as we would, as a committee, we would look at the needs of each school, and as my colleague stated, we would, you know, the superintendent would come up with his game plan based on what the principals needed, and we would look at that, and if we thought that that was a good program or if that was the direction of going, we'd approve the expenditure of the funds in that direction. Programs that we talked about last night, we had a presentation, we talked about A Network and in some of the schools, we'd look to expand that potentially. So there are a number of things we can do, but we would definitely look at what works in the district now, and we'd try to provide the same thing throughout the district for everyone, making sure that they have what they need. And my other colleague mentioned caseload for some of the counselors. It's astronomical, so having extra councils in place would also play a huge role in getting our students what they need. Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
Thank you for the question. It's a great question, and I think it's a very important issue in our school district today. We have what I would call a, we have a lottery-based program right now for early childhood, for pre-K. And that, to me, it's unacceptable, because it is not giving a good level playing field for the people that don't get picked in the lottery-based system that go to the pre-K program, and the ones that don't get picked for that, it's not leveled out. So I think using those funds for this district, and I would say this right now, that I would not approve anything, right now approve anything, if it wasn't going toward the classroom for the children. I would approve, like Mr. McCoy said, a full-time pre-K program, a citywide program for this city, and I think it's very important that we start doing that and make every child, a four-year-old, everybody have that level playing field.
Thank you. Mr. Costa.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I would just say that this Promise Act is a game changer for districts like Fall River and other gateway cities. $1.5 million over seven years roughly equates about $15 million in additional funding for Fall River. That, folks, levels the playing field across the state for our students, finally. For too long, our students have been trying to meet a bar with limited resources. This will infuse a number of dollars into the district to allow us to do a number of creative things, particularly in subgroups where the funding is intended to go: the English language learner population, special ed population. Granted, there'll be additional funding. I would clearly like to see additional offerings for pre-K, but expanding our special ed services so that students get educated in our district and not have to be educated outside of district. We spent too much money sending students to other districts to be educated. It's about time we expand those offerings and keep those students here. With the English language learner population, I think the district's about 17 percent of English language learners, which is, I'm told to stop. We'll talk, I'm sure, at a later date.
And thank you. You'll have another chance. Mr. McCoy, please.
I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you for the question. I've alluded to some of the things, but I'll reiterate: district-wide all-day pre-K. I think we've got to give some back to personnel, and I believe our starting salary for a teacher needs to be higher. We absolutely could use more adjustment counselors, and we could use more attendance officers. And quite frankly, I would like to hire the best people we could find in the state or New England who have experience in special education and autism and have personnel to review every existing IEP that we have, to make sure we are delivering a comprehensive education to our students with special needs and the sufficient support needed to support that family, to help those children succeed also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Collins, one minute.
Thank you for the question. I appreciate it. I think it's fantastic that this money is coming down the way, and I think, like everyone And I think, like everyone alluded to, I think it's up to the superintendent and the people in the classroom and the principals to make the decision as to where they really feel that money should go, with us just being the oversight, you know, and making sure that the stakeholders are being best represented in those answers. But personally, I think to close the gap, as I alluded earlier, with, between home and with school, I think is probably very important. That is a, that starts with a pre-K through three kind of program. And then, I think, what I feel is facilities maintenance plan. I think that we've made a very large capital improvement within the city, and I think that we need to now take care of these schools, make sure that they're safe for the children and for the students, make sure they have the technology that they need. And we would hopefully, when these kids are safe and when they're cared for and clean, that they can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Question number three comes from Sumaya Udin to Mr. Aguirre, and you'll have a two-minute response, Mr. Aguirre.
In the past few years, several schools throughout our district have faced threats, making families question the safety of their children. Do you feel our schools are safe? And what would you say to reassure parents?
I haven't been able to make it. Can you repeat?
Yeah. I'm sorry. In the past few years, several schools throughout our district have faced threats, making families question the safety of their children. Do you feel our schools are safe? What would you say to reassure parents?
So, I think it's, I'm going to answer that in two parts. The first one is I do think the schools are safe because we're working very hard to make sure that the threats that you talk about are more major threats. And we have processes in place where, using the ALIS system, we have, all of our doors are locked with security cameras and all that. Major improvement over the last 10 years from what we used to have in our schools. So, the bigger piece of the answer is about safety related to that. I had alluded to some other things earlier about students that are misbehaving in our classroom or exhibiting behaviors that shouldn't be in the school system. That's the safety that I want to really focus on because I think it is affecting where people want to send their students. People and parents and families are deciding to not send their students to the Fall River Public Schools because of some of the issues that they have to deal with if they do get into the classroom. And I really can't blame them for that. They want their best for their children, and if they think another program is going to be safer, whether it's a charter school, whether it's a vocational school or anything, they're making that decision. I think as legislators, both on the local level as well as in the state, we have to look at that and say, what are the programs and why are students going to the schools that they have? Looking at Derfi High School, for instance. If I look at the Derfi High School from 20 years ago and the Derfi High School today, there's major, major changes. But one of the major changes that I see is that the middle-class families that were living in Fall River, and they really sent their students to Derfi High School. There wasn't as much choice. Right now, the choices are the charter school, the vocational school, maybe Catholic schools. So, what we're getting is a different clientele that comes into the district. To the tune of, at the high school age, if you actually look at the number, there's probably 1,000 high school-age students that choose not to go to Derfi High School. And we need to do everything we can to reverse that trend if we want to make our schools a safer place.
Thank you. One-minute response, Mr. Hetzler.
Well, I definitely feel our schools are safe. I send my two youngest kids to Fall River Public Schools, and if I felt there was a major issue, we would address it immediately. My colleague said, the doors are locked, we have protocols in place, any threats are addressed almost immediately as soon as we know about them. So, anything that might come up, it's investigated, and we take care of what we have to take care of. We have SROs in the middle schools and the high school, excuse me, in the high schools. So, we're able to address stuff. Now, I do believe we can do a better job with security, and I'm hoping that's something we can look at in the future. What I will say is, I've had a lot to say about security recently, and you can't necessarily stop everything, right? Tragedies happen across the country. So, one thing I've kind of taken on was ensuring that some of our staff are trained, for instance, what they call "stop the bleed" training in the event of an active shooter or hostile event. Our teachers are prepared to respond, or some of them are prepared to respond, and we have resources in place to address anything that may arise, any injuries and stuff like that, in the schools now, if we need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Thank you very much. Yeah, it's a, I do believe that the schools are very safe. When I was on the school committee, we made it a priority to make sure that those, the schools were safe, and we allocated the proper resources to make sure that that happened. I do agree with Mr. Aguirre, though, what he said relative to the choices today as were opposed to when I was an eighth grader at Morton Middle School. And really, the only choice for us was Derfi High School. There was also Diamond, Bishop Connolly, but there weren't as many choices as there are today. And that puts a lot of, you know, issues with Derfi High School. Because, you know, when, say if you're getting, maybe you want to go to Diamond, all Diamond looks at is your grades also, but behavior. So, I mean, as far as, I'm very comfortable with the schools, and I believe that they're safe, but I do believe, agree with Mr. Aguirre, that there's more choices. And I can't rule, I can't take away the choices for the parents.
Mr. Hart, that's one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's okay. Mr. Costa, one minute, please.
Absolutely. Feel the schools are safe. As a parent of three students who attend the Fall River Public Schools, my oldest daughter graduated from Derfi High School. I have one currently at the high school, one in the middle school. Listen, are there issues at the high school? Absolutely. 2,300 students in the same place at any given day for that long a period of time, there are going to be situations that occur. But the reality is there are more students making good choices there than bad choices every day. Unfortunately, I think the stigma is that the high schools and the public school systems aren't safe. We have sufficient plans in place, emergency personnel, first responders know the plans that have been set forth by the school system. We routinely train and practice those plans. The schools are safe. Can we do more? Absolutely. Right now, the school department has funded seven SROs who are in our schools. Could we expand that? That's something that we'd certainly look at, depending on the available resources. But to answer your question, Sumaya, I feel personally, as a parent and as a member of this school committee, that our schools are safe on a daily basis.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. And Mr. McCoy, one minute.
Thank you for the question, Sumaya. I too agree that overall, I mean, Derfi is a large, difficult building to manage. I think we have to improve training for our staff. We also have to, we also have to send a general message and reinforce it constantly, one of respect. You know, I think to, back to graduations that I attended, I was fortunate enough to attend, it's the highlight of the academic year, and we tell students that they're unique, they can be anything they can be, and they're the greatest folks on the world. Maybe we've got to start elaborating on that and remind them that that goes for the same for the students sitting on each side of them. You know, I mean, whether we've got to reinforce it, again, through, with parent-teacher conferences, through robo-calls, but a general atmosphere of respect from a tactical standpoint, make sure we have state-of-the-art security systems, proper cooperation between security staff, administrators, and police department. And when we see children who are not succeeding in the traditional academic setting, let's provide services or explore other things, maybe early work release, internships, things of that nature.
Ms. Collins?
Yes, as a parent of four children who have gone through the, or are currently in the Fall River Public School system, as everyone who has children here would said, I wouldn't send my children to these schools if they weren't safe. So, yes, I believe that these buildings are safe. We could always do more, we could always appreciate more SRO offices. So, you know, maybe, as we discussed earlier, some of that Chapter 70 money, maybe, you know, we could, we could use to better the actual presence of SRO offices. I think, you know, within the middle schools, there are issues, but there aren't any real large issues, and they're handled very quickly. Within the high school, I know there are issues. There are kids who necessarily just don't want to be at school. And so, they cause havoc and they cause disruption in order to get out of class. But, you know, I think, for the most part, I think Derfi's a very safe school. I think with the options that everyone has to choose from, I think that, you know, when I personally did, we did our walkthroughs with schools, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
We'll have time. Mr. Corey, one minute.
Thank you, Sumaya. As a retired educator, I've had a chance to visit many schools throughout my career, as well as on the school committee, seeing, our schools are very well-secured. Safety is always on our mind, always. Teachers are drilled, students are drilled, there are fire drills, there are bomb drills, there's all kinds of drills going on throughout the year at all of our schools. There are SROs-based elementary, middle, and high school who also help to create a safe atmosphere. One thing that we can help with the violence within schools is to foster groups and group dialogues. So, to have kids in social skills groups and the SROs talking with them and the teachers as well, this helps to bond the campus. Thank you.
Thank you. And question four comes from Nicholas Souza. It will be directed first to Mr. Hetzler with two minutes.
Mr. Hetzler, it is known that students love their phones. And in Cranston, Rhode Island, the school committee is actually proposing a phone ban during the school day. How would you vote on a measure to ban phones during school?
Phones are definitely a huge distraction for our students. There's no doubt about it. I mean, not just a distraction for our students, they're a distraction for society in general in a lot of cases. Banning phones, would I like to ban phones? Absolutely. But the problem is, if you ban phones, it's, first of all, you have to, you have to worry about discipline, right? There's 2,300 students, I believe, at Derfi, now you're going to have to, you know, how many kids are going to sneak a phone in their bag? How many kids are going to have a phone in their pockets? So, you're going to have disciplinary issues. So, maybe banning them isn't the best course of action. Maybe it's just really regulating the use of the phones. Phones can be good if there's an emergency, students are able to dial out and get help if they need to. But obviously, the drawback is the phones can be a huge distraction. So, it's a tough call, exactly what to do. I mean, we could look at what other districts are doing. Is it working? Do we think it'll work here in Fall River? We have policy in place now for cell phone use that I think it's followed in some situations, and then others, you know, we could lose track of that. Maybe certain classes, kids are pulling out their phone and going on them when they shouldn't be. But we just have to follow the code of conduct and discipline students accordingly if they're using their phone when they're not supposed to. So, I would definitely entertain preventing the use of phones while in class, absolutely. I don't know if I would, you know, ban them from the building. So, that's a tough decision. I really, we'd have to think about it a little bit longer, and maybe there's some different rules we could apply. But phones are definitely a distraction, and I definitely want to limit their use during class time. When they're learning, they should be learning and not playing on their phone. Other than that, they can be a resource as well. So, I think we just need to focus on the best policy and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hetzler. And one-minute response from Mr. Hart.
Thank you. Excuse me, and thank you for the question. Excuse me. Yeah, it's interesting because, I mean, I think the times are a lot different. I mean, if you ask my father that, who was a teacher at Diamond in the late 60s and early 70s, and first athletic director there, and he was a Marine, he'd probably say, yes, ban the phones, they're no good. You've got to learn in the school, there's no time for that kind of, you know, activity in the classroom. However, these times are different. I think, I don't think I would be in favor of a ban of the cell phones. I think it would be, you know, it's a lot different today. If a parent needs to contact their child, obviously, the old way to do it is through contacting the office. However, like I said, times have changed. And I think that as long as you follow the rules of what the school has for the policy, then that's fine, but you need to enforce those policies and the rules, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Costa, one minute.
So, I'll just say that with the advent of cell phones and the use of cell phones, certainly if you look around, everybody's using them, whether they're in school, out of school, in social settings, at work settings, adults use them, students are using them. I don't know that I would go on an all-out ban, but I certainly would advocate for restricting them in certain settings. You know, the phones serve a valuable purpose. For some, it's a lifeline or an outside connection to people who, in emergency situations, may need to reach somebody. But the reality is, if they being used for educational purposes and the policy that was developed initially was driven by that, students had access to a mobile device in their hand that could connect to the internet and they could do some school research. The reality is, I don't think it's being used in that fashion now. Certainly now, it's probably more the apps that the students are using. So, I would enforce sort of a balanced approach to that, where teachers would have the discretion to either use them for educational purposes, and if it's not part of their lesson on a particular day, to exclude them from the educational setting.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, one minute, please.
Sorry, Nick, I was on my phone. I apologize. The, I can't believe I'm the old-fashioned one here, but at the elementary and middle school level, I think it's a no-brainer, I'd ban them. They're powered off, if you, if they have them, they're powered off coming in, you can power them up when you leave. I think at the high school level, I mean, if folks are old enough to drive a car, they could potentially have to respond to an emergency situation. I don't think the first call, if there's an emergency situation, is a kid in middle school. And, I mean, we've operated schools now for a couple hundred years in this country. I'm sure if there is a serious problem, the office can be contacted. So, quite frankly, I don't see any benefit to having them. And again, this may sound a little old-fashioned, the elementary school and middle schools ban them. And I would need to consult with administration at Derfi, you know, to get a better, a better idea of what would be an appropriate response or usage at the high school. I'd rely on Principal Damaris and his opinion.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, Ms. Collins?
I probably won't even need a minute for this one. I, my kids have flip phones because I just don't agree with them. So, I think there should be a ban. I think Diamond does it very, very well. The phones are not allowed to be used in school at all. They're kept in their lockers. Even as far as athletics, they're not allowed to use them in the gym. They have to come outside to call a parent. I think we all went to school without cell phones, and if there was an issue, a parent knew how to get in touch with you, and the office knew how to get in touch with you. So, I just, I think that they're not used for educational purposes, and I think they're just a distraction in the classroom. Maybe it's because I was raised by a Marine. Sorry.
I think that's two of you. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Corey, one minute, please.
Yeah, thank you for the question. It's an important one. I'm conflicted because I know that phones are necessary for a lot of classroom technology and research. So, in many ways, cell phones have become a necessary tool in the classroom. On the other side of that, cell phones can also embolden bad student behavior. And so, we all have concerns about that. Some of those concerns run very deep. So, it's a very difficult question to solve, but yes, it's a question that we need to confront moving forward. I guess if we had more Chromebooks, maybe we would be less reliant on cell phones for the technology in classroom. So, maybe that billion and a half could be used in that way, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
So, I do agree with Mr. Corey on the Chromebook piece. We bought several thousand Chromebooks already this year. I think that's an important piece. To look at what was happening in the past when they changed the policy at the high school to encourage the use, to bring your own device, I think it had good intentions. But from what I understand, the good intentions are not necessarily all that's happening because students cannot be trusted to use their phone in the proper way. A great majority of them might be that way, but there's too many distractions in the classroom with this phone. So, I would say we should have a policy in place, lock them up, and don't take them out during the school day. The other thing about talking about education and using them for education and for what a teacher says, the problem that school administration has is the laws are not on their side to actually discipline a student that tells the teacher or the principal or the vice-principal, no, I'm not giving it up. And then, you've got to fight on your hands. You can't suspend the person, you can't discipline the person. So, we're not helping ourselves here by creating policies that doesn't allow the administration to control it. And if that's the case, we need to ban them all out.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. And question number five is asked by Thomas Michael to Mr. Hart. It will be a two-minute answer. It will be a two-minute answer.
What are your goals to possibly improve attendance, and how would you achieve these goals?
Great question. First, also, parent involvement. It all starts at home. So I would hope that the parents understand the importance of their child's education, and that they would get them to school on time, and at the school, ready and ready to learn. The other issue there, too, is, again, I'll mention the Student Opportunity Act that hopefully will be passed. And that, like Mr. Costa said, it's a game changer, looking at $15 million a year for seven years for this district. And as I want the money to be allocated to the classrooms first, I also think that it's important that we look at outside of the classroom. And I do believe that the year in and year out, when I was on the school committee, the attendance offices in this district had a lot of schools on their hands and a lot of students on their hands, and to watch those students. And I think that clearly, we have, when that is approved, we'll have the proper resources to add. I know they added two more attendance offices this year for the budget, but I think that we could easily add with those resources, three or four. And I think that would help with the attendance issue, and I think it would help out as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. One minute, Mr. Costa.
So chronic absenteeism, certainly a problem that plagues Fall River schools. The reality is, if students aren't in the seats, we can't educate them. But that starts at the beginning, when they come through the door the first day of school. We have to express the importance of education and being in school every day. Now, obviously, some students, particularly in urban districts, have a difficult time getting to school. So you have to take a look at transportation issues and barriers for that. We've invested in money for bus passes at the high school to assist. This committee has taken on, in this last year's budget, and approved two additional school attendance offices to assist. But the reality is that we have to do a better job at outreach to families, making sure that families at home are reinforcing the importance of education and making sure they're getting their students to school every day. As I said before, if they're not in the seat, you can't educate them. But it really comes down to the emphasis being put on all fronts. Attendance offices, support from parents in the home, and making sure that students have an ability to plug in to programs in schools that are enjoyable.
Mr. McCoy, your turn. One minute, please.
Thank you for the question. The, you know, I was just, I was reflecting back on what Mr. Costa alluded to, where we would do our best to help economically challenged families deal with transportation and providing bus passes and whatnot. It's a difficult issue, again, with the new funding formula. I think additional attendance officers, you know, expand. I know our extended day practices were initially done to increase time on learning, to help with scores. Maybe we gotta focus on those kids, use our guidance councils, our administrators to identify things that we can engage those kids who are chronically absent, and maybe incorporate that in our extended day. I've also wondered if we could increase, you know, career days, businessmen and women from the community to come in, and start it at younger levels, to where, you know, we explain to kids that there's gonna be a point where you're an adult, you're gonna need to earn and make money and live out for retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
And hopefully, those role models could benefit us.
Ms. Collins, that's one minute.
That's a great question, but I think the reality is, is the school department and the school committee have made great strides, and chronic absenteeism is down in the city. I believe that we transport children within a one-mile radius of their schools, and the state mandate is two miles. So I think that we are doing things. I don't want there to be, you know, a disparaging remark made in reference to this, because I think the committee has been working, and the school department has been working very hard to make these things happen. But, you know, children learn differently, and a lot of children learn, can't learn in a regular school setting. So I think that we need to take a look at maybe giving different options for children and giving different options for high school students to make them, engage them, and to make them more comfortable and wanna learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Thank you. Since I've been on the school committee in my first term, I've joined the mayor's attendance task force and attend meetings regularly to discuss this very serious issue. Attendance has been a years-long problem. Some of our schools are simply too far away for parents to walk their children to school each day, and transportation is already an extremely expensive option that we have on our table. We had long discussions and debates on transportation this year, but we need to target more outreach, and we need to really, we've just hired two more attendance officers. And I wanna let the teachers know that chronic absenteeism is at the heart of our poor test cause. So make a plea to parents, bring your kids to school, we need your kids in seats. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Corey. Mr. Aggar, one minute, please.
So we need to increase, and I think we're doing this in a lot of cases, the relationships that the schools have with the families. We obviously need to do that in a better way. My stance on adding attendance offices is just throwing money at attendance offices alone will not work, because they can contact the parents. The laws are not on the side right now of being able to take a family or a child to court, like in the old days. We need to get back to the basics. Right now, you can be absent 32 days per year before the attendance officer can actually take you to court. If a parent refuses to take their child to school, it's a $20 fine that nobody even issues. So we need to step up our own game to say, if the laws are not on our side, we're gonna get blamed later on. We need to step up the pressure on certain families. But we need to also support the families. We have some situations that the students are still going over a mile to school, and they're not walking to school and getting there. I think we need to have, each school needs to have their own transportation to go pick those families up, deal with them directly, and get those children into school on a daily basis, separate from the regular transportation and busing.
Thank you, Mr. Aggar. And Mr. Hetzler, one minute, please.
Well, I think the district's doing a decent job right now, really promoting a culture of everyone coming to school, right? We're tweeting out attendance every day, weekly phone calls in the schools, we're talking about attendance and how important it is. So to continue to stress the importance of showing up at school every day is huge, not just to the student, but to the parents, to everyone. And just if everybody is singing the same song, hopefully, kids will start to show up at school. So there's a couple of things I think that we could do a little bit better. One, we could definitely offer, maybe pick some of these kids up that are chronically absent, work with those families, ask them, what can we do? You know, what can we do differently to help you get your student to school? We've talked about if, you know, a student was out in the morning for an abysmal, maybe we can go pick them up after they're having trouble. In neighborhoods where we have high rates of chronic absenteeism, maybe some walking bus routes. We do that now, where we have people who work for the school system, that they go out into certain neighborhoods, and they pick up a number of students, and they walk to school with them as a big group. So I think those types of things are really helping out the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six will be asked by Sumaya Udun and directed to Mr. Costa first. Two minutes, please.
Studies show that youth in gateway cities and inner cities experience trauma at a staggering rate. What are your plans to address trauma in the students of our school district?
Great question. It's an ever-growing population in the public schools. Students are coming to our classrooms, more and more, having experienced traumatic issues, either acutely, meaning it happened recently, or bringing traumatic past to our schools. The school committee's taken a stance on social-emotional learning, providing additional services and supports. One of the things that I'd love to see, I do believe it's another urban district, New Bedford does it, to have mental health services in our schools, particularly at the high school, where students may be experiencing some issues, and we have adjustment counselors there to assist. But I think a more robust staff, psychiatric nurses, maybe psychiatrists, other mental health professionals or clinicians, where individuals can privately seek assistance. I believe it's a behavioral center, a behavioral center, a mental health center that New Bedford has in their school system. I certainly would like to explore that option. I think that more and more, as a member of the school committee, we receive on a daily basis a number of emails regarding students that are in crisis. And so being able to assist in the elementary grades with support for those students, far too often, those students are being sent out on a section and being taken out of our school. So really taking the steps to increase the level of services we provide in our buildings. Our nurses do a fantastic job, but the reality is, there are too many students visiting our nurses each day, and not enough specialty services going on in those classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Mr. McCoy.
Sumaya, thank you for the question. I alluded in my statement a few minutes ago about the idea of maybe having a full-blown mental health fair in the month of March, which is our longest academic month. To have outside services come into every school, have an open house for families, students, and staff. You know, I understand time on learning is critical, but maybe every once in a while, we need to call a timeout. Obviously, for acute traumatic issues, I know there are times that our school system, at least, you know, they did it when I served, and I'm sure it's ongoing now, where we've had to go and support families who've gone through traumatic instances. But we also know right now that alcoholism addiction, the rise of those despicable diseases, are not personal diseases, they're really family diseases. They hold entire families hostage. Children who are the kids of addicts and alcoholics are going through absolute hell, and we need to provide outlets for them to discuss the issues that they're facing and the trauma that they're going through. Let them know that someone is available to speak to.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. That's one minute, Ms. Collins.
Yes. I think, like Mark alluded to, the crisis intervention team, I think, would be, is critical, because as, again, Tim said, that we do have, we have an opioid crisis in the city, and there are times where we have children who are in absolute trauma, and the only, the safest place that they really need to be is in school. So I think, you know, we're working very hard with social-emotional learning, but these school adjustment counselors, they're, you know, they're strapped, there's one, let's just say, I have a child at Tansy, there's one at Tansy, there's probably 500 kids there. There's no way that she can tackle every single kid every single day to check in to make sure that they're okay. So I think a crisis intervention team is probably the quickest and easiest way to rectify that situation.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
The focus on social-emotional learning today is the highest I've ever seen in our public schools. As a retired adjustment counselor, I've worked head-on with the issue. The issues affecting Fall River socially and emotionally manifest inside the classroom and interfere with the learning process. What we need to do is foster social skills groups in our schools. Kids need to be dialoguing with one another, with a mentor, with the SROs, with the teachers. More dialoguing creates higher communication, better communication within those groups. Foster a therapeutic message to the child to try to endure the hardships they're living through so that they can forward their education. So I'm a big proponent of social skills groups. Thank you.
Mr. Aggar, one minute, please.
So I agree with a lot of what was said here tonight, but I do also think that we need to increase our own expertise in the field, which I think we are doing. Having more qualified and certified staff that are able to deal with trauma, not only the crisis, like something that really happens that we know of, a lot of trauma, you don't even know that it's happening, and involving these children for their entire life. Sometimes it manifests at different ages. The teachers are trying to deal with it, the counselors are trying to deal with it. Ultimately, it's a very difficult thing that we have to do, but we're overwhelmed. The reality of the situation is, is that our counselors, the Fall River Public Schools, are overwhelmed. So we do need more counselors, and I also think we need to increase, which we're doing, working with outside agencies, like the Children's Advocacy Center. It's a great organization that does some training with our staff. I think we need to look at all the resources in our community, put them all together, and get our system up to snuff relative to what is trauma and how we deal with trauma in the classroom and outside of the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. Hetzler.
Definitely a huge concern here in Fall River. A number of students, they go through a variety of issues at home, and they bring that to school with them. They're carrying a ton of emotional baggage that really makes it difficult for them to get through the day. So increasing our adjustment councils, for instance, would be one great thing that we can do to help these kids go through it. And as my colleagues have stated, their caseloads are huge, and we really need more professionals in the building that can help these students out. An excellent thing we've done recently, an initiative called Handle With Care, where we work with our first responders in the community, and they're able to kinda give a heads-up to the school as, hey, listen, this student experienced something pretty traumatic last night, and just handled the student with care today. So I think that helps. So partnering with other community agencies, as my colleague said, the CAC, I mean, there are a number of resources in the community to help these students out. And we need to promote the culture of, you know, sharing things. These students need to be able to share and open up with each other, with our staff, with our teachers, and let them know what's going on, so that way we can get them some help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, one minute, please.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the question. And the only bad thing is, when you're last in the questions and everybody's answered the question pretty well, it's tough for me to not repeat what everyone's been saying. But I do think that, there's no question about it, that it's a very important issue in the public schools, in our district today. And I do agree with what a lot of people said here on the panel, I agree with Mr. McCoy. I do think that maybe there might be a time to call a timeout and bring some folks in and talk to the students that are having trouble and crisis. But I also think, too, and I'm not too sure about this, but I think we would, maybe it would be smart as well to hire maybe a full-time psychiatrist in the school district, if there's not one there already. But I believe there isn't one. But I would also not just stop right there. I would actually, when I, if I'm fortunate to get elected, I would maybe meet with the superintendent and the folks that are very familiar with these particular situations in the school district, and then I would make more proper decisions.
Thank you. And our final question, question seven, will be asked by Nicholas Souza to Mr. McCoy. We have a two-minute answer.
Mr. McCoy, when talking about younger students, some districts in Massachusetts have done away with recessed and replaced it with additional learning time. Is this something that you support?
No. That's the simple answer, no. I still think there's a place, there is still a place for phys ed, especially with our younger age children. I've spoken several times about the benefits of calling a bit of a timeout, and I think the, you know, it's a good release of energy. I think in this day and age with devices and video games and whatnot, I'm not saying it's maybe rigorous exercise, but I think to emphasize some physical activity amongst our young children is beneficial. Exercise the body, also exercise the mind. I think we could even promote physical activity at a younger age, and we have to reinforce it, right? I mean, I know my generation grew up on fast food, McDonald's, Burger King, things of that nature. I know it's hard to believe, Mr. Costa, but I, too, was a frequent flyer at McDonald's. But again, no, I would not, I would not support banning phys ed and outdoor activities in recess, particularly for elementary students. I think that's ridiculous. Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, thank you. We'll get to our responses now. One minute for Ms. Collins.
I believe that recess is absolutely necessary. You lose a child after about 45 minutes, if anybody's ever tried to teach or explain anything to a child, so. And I think that it causes more conflict in class, because these kids need to get up, and they need to move around, and they need to just, as Tim has said time and time again, just take a timeout. I think that, and the teachers need it, too, frankly. We're extending these days to give some more holistic classroom activities to these kids, but then in turn, we're taking away their resource to get, I apologize, recess to, you know, to get all the learning in. And I just don't think that it's, you know, look at Mr. Malone in the back, he can never sit still, so I don't know how we expect any of our kids to actually try to sit still for an entire day.
Thank you. Mr. Corey, one minute.
That was a great question, Nicholas. Thank you very much. Recession, absolutely necessary. We have to support recess. Children have shorter retention spans if they're always busy. They need free play, they need unstructured time. It's therapeutic and necessary. When I was working in the schools, Nick, I supervised recess at the elementary school, and it gave me a chance to bond with the kids, throwing the football around, riding the slide with them, high-fiving them, low-fiving them, loved every minute of it. Then they'd go back to class, refocused and ready for a fresh set of instructional time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aggar.
I do think that recess is important, and if you look at, if you ever worked in an elementary school, and you ever had indoor recess as opposed to outdoor recess, the whole building changes. It's unbelievable. So there's definitely a benefit to recess, having recess. With that being said, the other question about the funding and the resources that we need in the schools, in order to manage a school building, you have to have practice for the recess, you have to have people that are able to take their prep periods, and it's a management nightmare sometimes to do this type of work. So we need to increase our staffing levels of even supervisory people to be able to help us. I worked at a school in Fall River, and I was a recess aide, like Mr. Corey said. It was me and another person for 200 students. It's impossible to do anything constructive with that kind of setup. So we need to provide the resources so that the principals can actually do the proper things and have organized play and controlled play. We can't have out-of-control recess, that's not gonna help anybody, but I do support recess as a general stance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aggar. And Mr. Hetzler, one minute, please.
Resources, sorry, recess is absolutely necessary on all levels. In fact, we might need more recess, and maybe some recess at the high school level, because students need to burn off some energy. There's no doubt about it. I can barely sit still in this chair right now, I kinda wanna get up and move around. You know, and there's kids with certain medical conditions, ADHD, they need to move around, they need to get up, they need to stretch out, they need to play, they need to interact with each other, and not that, you know, school setting where it's kinda a little more strict. They need to just go and explore and get some fresh air. I mean, it's super important, it's absolutely necessary, and I would never entertain removing[1728.26] recess at all. If anything, I would just expand recess. And as far as the resources, let's get them because these kids need to get outside and they need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hart, one minute.
I agree with the panel. I think it would be absolutely ridiculous to get rid of recess. It is, it's healthy, it puts the mind at ease, it gives the students a break. So no, no way. I think that also though too, I believe what Mr. Aguirre said, that it does need to be organized. And I believe when I was on the school committee, this issue was brought up and I do believe that they did have organized recess, as I think more importantly in the, in the elementary schools. And I, I just think that to do away with, with recess just, just loses any kind of, you know, healthy nutritional at ease, keep your mind at ease and have the students take a break, do the 15 minutes of recess and then get back to school.
Thank you. And Mr. Costa, that's one minute.
Absolutely not. I wouldn't ban recess. Everybody's touched on the point, so I won't go too far into it. But the reality is that children have forgotten how to play. We need to be able to encourage more of it. And recently, I just received a phone call from a constituent, a parent, who had that same very concern that their son, who was in an extended learning program, is in school for a very long time. Some of those students are up and out at the door at 6:00 in the morning, they don't come back until 4:00 in the afternoon. To cut recess out of a day for a student like that certainly is not helpful. You know, less activity starts to manifest in poor behavior. And then the expectations are there that the student behave better. Well, I think, as many people have said, more opportunity to be out on the playground, socializing with one another, blowing off some steam, clearing their mind is actually a more healthy approach than restricting that.
Thank you. Please excuse my oversight in the beginning, we'll now move on to our closing statements. Okay? So that's 90 seconds from Ms. Collins.
Again, I want to thank Fred TV and I want to thank the students at Durfee for putting this debate together. I'm, I'm happy that it was more of a forum and less of a debate because I wasn't really prepared for that. But I want to, again, my name is Rebecca Collins and as a parent of four children and as a business owner, I believe that I have the, the experience in my business aspect and as a parent to be a good stakeholder and represent the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey.
Hi, my name is Tom Corey. I'm a candidate for reelection to the Fall River School Committee. I'm a lifelong resident of Fall River. My wife, Charlene, taught here at Cuss Middle School for 34 years. I spent 30 years working as a teacher and counselor in the Fall River Public Schools. My four children were all educated in our public schools and went on to build their lives through hard work and I have been the concerned parent of my own children as well as an educational leader with 30 years of experience in our schools. I'm proud of the accomplishments of our classrooms, but I also understand where the problems are. I will continue to advocate for what works. I will fight against what does not work. I will collaborate with my colleagues to get things done. I respectfully ask for your consideration on Tuesday, November 5th, so I can be reelected to the Fall River School Committee. And thank you to Fred TV for hosting this great forum tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre.
I wanted to start off by just saying thank you to Fred TV, thank you to the students, thank you to the administration at the schools for allowing you to create this program for us today. I just drafted a few notes from some of the questions that I didn't get a chance to totally elaborate, so I want to focus on a couple of those. One is we talked about spending and where we can actually spend the money. When we talk about teacher retention, we have to look at pay parity and I believe that's a very important piece. When we get students, teachers in Fall River that we can train and are dedicated, but they can go to a nearby community and make $10,000 more per year, you know what's going to happen in those, many of those cases. So we need pay parity is one of the things. The other one is around the laws related to school resource officers. When we talk about safety in our buildings, the school resource officer has always been, as far as I'm concerned, to help maintain order in the school and to help the administration maintain order in the school. Currently, that's not even in the MOU between the schools and the SROs. The laws have changed so that the school resource officers truly can't even help maintain order in the schools and that's got to change. We need to increase alternative ed programs for our struggling students. One size definitely does not fit all in education and we need to continue to improve those alternative programs that we do have. When we talk about attendance and trying to raise the attendance, I think it goes hand in hand with some of the mental health needs of our students and our families. As I mentioned during, a couple months ago, I do think that we need to hire a psychiatrist on staff so that we can actually get the services to our children. And I'm going to close with three priority areas that I just noted.
I'm sorry.
I will not close with those three.
Mr. Hetzler.
Thank you. I just want to ask for your support. I was born and raised here in Fall River, I'm raising my family here in Fall River. I kind of, you know, I know what the students are going through, I've watched my four kids, I know now my two youngest are in school as well. I know what parents are going through in the district and I understand what employees are going through, my wife working at a school. So I have a good grasp on what's going on in the school system. Again, I'm a firefighter, I have that public safety background, I was in the military, so safety's always a concern. I'm a contractor, small business, so I understand construction, I understand business and finances and I understand retention and when it comes to employees and why they could leave if we don't get pay parity or, you know, if their workload isn't, you know, comparable to a surrounding community. So I would hope that I'm reelected so I can continue working with my colleagues towards making progress here in this great city and I look forward to your support. Thank everyone here this evening, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hart.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pam, thank you, Fred TV, the students, Renee with the cameras, and also the folks at Cuss Middle for allowing this venue and all the folks out there watching on Fred TV and the folks here in the audience. Again, I'm a lifelong resident of Fall River. My parents were John Jackhart and Joan Canolehart. They brought up four boys, two girls, six kids in the family, stressed education to the fullest. I'm now in that position with my two children to stress that as well and I do stress it with them. And I hope that every parent does that and gets involved in their child's education because it's, I think it all starts at home and it's very important. I'm very, very happy to, to be here with, with my colleagues here, they're all good people. And we had a very good discussion tonight about what is the best thing for our school district and for the, for the school committee. And I also really want to thank, you know, all the people out there that I've been going door-to-door and encouraging me to, to run. And again, if I am fortunate enough to get elected again, I will continue to do the hard work that is necessary to be on the school committee and with a great bunch of colleagues. So if you remember on Tuesday, November 5th, please give Paul Hart a vote. Thank you.
Mr. Costa.
Thank you and thank you to the students, Pam, you as the moderator and each of the candidates for this forum on education. And thank you, the listeners and viewers at home, for dialing in today on this very important topic. Over the past 14 years, I've had the honor and the privilege to serve this great city as your voice on the Fall River School Committee. That is a responsibility I've never taken for granted because the stakes have always been too high. Education is too important and the opportunities that it provides impacts each of us in this community on a daily basis. My wife and I are proud products of the Fall River Public Schools. I'm a product of the Watson Elementary School, the Talbot Middle School and Diamond High School. And as a parent of three students, one who graduated from Durfee and two are currently in the school system, I understand as a parent your concerns about lower class sizes, safety in our schools, high-quality trained educators and challenging curriculum. And that's why on November 5th, I respectfully ask for your vote and in return, I promise you to continue to give you my best. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Ms. McCoy.
I want to thank everyone for the opportunity tonight. Pam, it was good to see you, Fred TV, Renee and your staff, thank you very much. You know, I like to think education is the great equalizer in our community. I'm an example of that. I'm fortunate to be a graduate of Bishop Conley Providence College, New England School of Law in Boston. And, you know, thank God that my parents promoted education because I can't fix a thing with my hands and I would be in big, big trouble trying to earn a living these days. I feel fortunate. It's not an easy time to be a kid, it's not an easy time to be a teacher, the stakes are high.